Special meeting of the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 24th at 7:02. For the seating of alternates, at this point right now, we don't have any alternates to seat unless, well, here comes Doug, here comes another number.
Hi Jeff, Doug Jennings here.
Hello Doug.
I'm just with my phone, I'm leaving work right now, it's another long day.
Okay, thank you for calling in, hope your hand's free.
Yes.
And do we have a connection for the 6339 number?
That's Catherine Sampson.
Oh, okay, oh, I already had Catherine up here though, I thought. Maybe she's going through the audio here?
No, that's not Catherine.
No?
Yeah, I think that's Mark.
Hold on.
Is it Mark?
I got a picture of Mark right here.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Who is that 6339?
That's me, Catherine.
That's you?
That's me. It took me a while, it took me a while.
Okay.
You're showing twice, I think that happened to her last time too. You're special.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Catherine, you can only vote once.
Oh, is that, is that in the rule? Oh, okay.
Okay, so to that point, what we'll do is we'll seat, we've only got the one alternate, so we'll seat Doug for Nord at this point.
Doug for Nord.
Doug for Nord. Okay, and again, this is a working meeting, we're trying to knock out and get the revisions completed for our regulations, so we can finish off on our public hearing for the next regular scheduled meeting for July 13th. I would just like to make a statement first though, for the record, and having to do with, basically last meeting, there was a lot being thrown around regarding version control and communication and et cetera. And I just want to say, as Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I personally want to apologize to Dick Williams regarding the change requests that the Ag Commission had made to the Commission in his absence, I believe on March 9th. And it's my responsibility to be sure that the information gets to where it needs to go, and I didn't do that, either by informing him myself, or being sure that I informed the Subcommittee to follow up with Dick to provide the information. So, that falls on me, and I do apologize for the confusion that it did cause, and I just want to thank Dick for all of his efforts, all of his work, it's like herding cats, I know, and again, all his effort is really appreciated, I think we're in the home stretch, we're coming down to the last point, and again, his efforts are greatly recognized and greatly appreciated. So, I just wanted to make sure that was out there, that that falls on me. So...
Jeff, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. Okay, so going to the two items, again, last time around, five and six, and the associated one-page administrative sec-action were fine, they'll go through as they are for the public hearing, and we posted that way. It's Articles 3 and 4 that we need to look at tonight, and to that end, we have two, I think, great versions that were shared with us. Dick shared the version dated 6/10, which captures the latest and greatest, and also for that, Doug also provided us with a marked-up copy that shows a review on his part, and Doug, if you can hear me as you travel, that is greatly appreciated, I appreciate all the effort and all the fine detail that you went through on this to help us put together not only a final document, but a more complete document. And I think as we go through this, as I reviewed the two side by side, I think a lot of the items have been captured, but we will go through that, as indicated here. I think what, unless you have any other input, Dick, I think what I'd like to do is go through a number of the changes that were captured by Doug from the 428 document, identifying those that have already been captured in here, or those that need some tweaking as we go through this to meet those needs.
Jeff, I had sent, Alex sent out the 610 revisions to everyone, but he didn't put the explanation of what was in those. I'd like to just run through what changes are in those in terms of kind of reiterating the email that I sent out to everyone after that. I did want to establish the fact that we have been using redlining from the get-go. We were up to the seventh revision on the Article 4B, and we're up to the second or third revision on the definitions, and each revision, working with a working group, was documented and the changes were there. So I sent those out to the groups just to show, indeed, we were tracking who was doing what and what was approved. What I couldn't do is when Mike did the redline version going back to the very original one, he did it as a PDF copy, so in making the changes to things, you can't do revision control on a PDF copy, so I simply made the revisions that were on the 428 document per what everyone had agreed to on the meeting that we had with the total commission. So that was the baseline point that was eventually released to everyone. When I did find out what the Ag Commission had submitted in March, I looked at what they had done, and then I did the 610 item, and by the way, Doug, there was a whole bunch of typos and issues that was not caught by anyone that you did catch with what you set out, so that'll definitely be incorporated in whatever we end up doing. But the main differences in what's in the 610 documents is the nuisance definition remains as it was. It is an item that is used in multiple places within a document, so it needs to be defined. And Jeff, you had an action to talk to the attorney to see if that opened up any potential for litigation with agriculture, did you get an opinion back on that?
Oh, yes, yes I did. Alex, did you share that, or no? Alex? Did you share that?
I did send that out.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it was lengthy, and I also had a discussion with Mike about this. It looks like, I mean, it's a long piece, both dealing with his first statement, I'll say, "I don't advocate the use of the term as a standalone prohibited use. Nuisance is a longstanding element of private property law, giving a property owner legal recourse against another person for interfering with reasonable use and occupancy of the property. The definition considered by your commission mimics the general definition used by courts to address on a case-by-case basis whether a person's private property rights are being impaired by the actions of another." Now, again, it goes on to, he goes on to discuss a number of things in here, including Connecticut Statute for the Right to Farm Act, which is cited oftentimes by farmers when it comes to this type of a problem, in violation of a zoning regulation, but it has no bearing on zoning. And he does state that the Agriculture's Commission's concern is well-founded, because regardless of the state statute, which would ensure that the operation of a farm is not ruled to be a nuisance in a private lawsuit, it could become one under a zoning regulation if someone moves into a house in close proximity to a farm enduring constant orders from agricultural operations and such. But long and the short of it was that Mike and I, Mike Damato and I were talking, and I think Mike had a conversation with Ken also, and I'm of a mind that we use a different language instead of nuisance, and what, actually, it's not so much different language than nuisance, it's getting rid of the word nuisance in the definitions, and just, for lack of a better term, defining it simply within short-term rentals. So, what I did was, and like an idiot, I printed up 12 copies, like I was going to give them out to you guys, I wrote some language here, and I don't know the best way to share it, if you don't mind, I'll share this as part of the nuisance, actually, I'm going to wait, I'll share this as part of the nuisance discussion when we come to that part in the definitions.
Jeff, the only thing I would add is, and I've not been party with the discussions you had with the attorney, we use the term nuisance in like 14 places in the existing land use regulations, and it's not defined anywhere. You could default on what is the legally accepted definition of nuisance, which is pretty much parallels what was put in the definition. It's a, it is a common legal definition, and our definition that we have is very similar to that. Whether it opens an agricultural use up to lawsuit, I don't know, but it could open up almost anything up to a lawsuit if someone wants to do it, but not based on what's in the definitions. Definitions are not rules and regulations, and I don't understand how Ken's coming down on where a definition turns out to be a rules and regulations.
Well, Ken's recommendation turned into the fact that if we were going to use it and keep it in there, in response to, well, my second question to him was, "The definition by itself can be applied to a conflict that's a basis for a lawsuit in the absence of a specific regulation." That was, that was the school of thought I gave him. My other was, "A definition by itself is not a regulation and should not be applied to a non-specific, non-regulated activity." The mere inclusion of the definition of nuisance would not enable enforcement. The Ashford Regulations, like most regulations in Connecticut, are permissive in nature, such that it lists the uses that are permissible in any given zone, and any not, any use not specifically authorized is prohibited. In order to prohibit nuisance generally in that zone, the first sentence of Section 2 could be changed from stating, "The following uses are permitted in the agricultural residential zone; two, the following uses that do not constitute a nuisance are permitted." And he's suggesting similar insertions of the word nuisance would need to be added to each zoning district in the section listing permitted in special permit uses. The use of the term that way could be vulnerable to challenge on what is known as the uniformity clause of the zoning-enabling statute, because the same two uses could be treated differently as a commission deems one a nuisance. So, there was a lot of other recommendation that came from it with changes and things like this to our overall language on a number of areas that we haven't gone into revising yet. I also offered this up too, there's a number of things in here that use the term establishment as a term, and we don't define the word establishment in any way either. So, I think because something is stated in the regs, doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to have a definition to it. However, I think when it comes to nuisance and our goal of being sure we have a recourse, that the Board has a recourse when it comes to, and this came up basically for short-term rentals, putting language in there that doesn't identify the word nuisance, but does identify an action and actually uses the definition itself without indicating nuisance. We were trying to come up with a different word to use, and no matter what word we put in there, it always opened us up to issues to be used elsewhere. So, what I'm offering up simply is this, under that Section 4 in permitted, taking nuisance out of the regs, the definitions I should say, and under that Section 4 in short-term rentals, "A first permit issued pursuant to this section shall expire within one year of issuance. After one year of compliance to all regulations pursuant to this section, renewed permits shall expire within two years of issuance. A permit of any time length may be revoked if the zoning administrator receives information in the form of complaints, documentation, photographs, or witnessed non-compliance of the regulations by the permittee, including any activity or condition that interferes with an owner's or rebutter's reasonable and lawful use and enjoyment of his property. Such revocation is subject to review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Permit issued pursuant to this section may be conditioned to limit the number of days during which temporary rentals may occur." So that was basically removing nuisance and simply using the definition itself, so it doesn't open up a term to be used in multiple areas with that definition.
Well, Jeff, that still leaves the use of nuisance in 14 other places in the existing land use regulations, which we're not at this point proposing to start to change. I can buy the idea to take it out of the definitions, but I think using the term within the short-term rentals would probably be appropriate there. And nuisance does have a legal definition that is listed multiple places that I looked. I mean, it is, it's not, it's a term that is defined, as you said, like the word establishment, you don't have to define something that has a legal definition, so, you know...
Can I just say, when Mark and I were working on the short-term rental verbiage, our goal was just to give the zoning enforcement agent some parameters, and I think what Jeff just read does that admirably, and it, I think, and also I think we can address the word nuisance as we come up with it, as we're going through the regs in the future.
Well, this is Mark, and a thought I had would be to add to the nuisance definition, a sentence such as, "The term nuisance should not be applied to normal farming and agricultural activities that are protected under right-to-farm laws."
This is Doug, that sounds good, Mark, but I agree with Janet, what Jeff just wrote, which I think I was hearing is from our attorney, hits the nail on the head on the intent of what we were trying to accomplish with short-term rentals, and that's the goal. We're getting hung up on a word and a definition, but we got to step back to the goal of what we're looking for.
Right, I mean, originally Janet and I did define nuisance within that short-term rental section, so I'm fine with that.
And just the other thing that came up regarding having nuisance, let's see, Ken says, "We do represent a town that has a general nuisance provision in its regulations that has resulted in dragging the zoning officer into a neighbor dispute where a new neighbor on a late-term property owner holds large parties, has installed inside the kayak racks, blah, 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 and all over his property, resulting in numerous calls by the neighbor to order the use stopped under the nuisance provision of the zoning regulations." And this is something that Mike and I talked about, that, you know, by keeping the nuisance in there, and using the terms of everything from, you know, putting in noise, putting in barking dogs, putting in all those things that potentially might be covered by other regs, it just opens it up to quite the headache for the zoning officer, zoning administrator, if you will, to deal with neighbor-on-neighbor issues. So, I think, I think the farther we move away from nuisance, the better we are for right now, that's my input.
My two cents worth is that it is referenced in, as I said, 14 other places in the existing regulations, and I don't think at this point in time, we want to tackle revising those other sections. It does have a widely accepted legal definition, so in lieu of not specifying it, it'll default to what the widely accepted legal definition is.
Right, I agree with that.
So, in those cases, that will take it. Now, if you want to change things, such it is a little different than what we have in the short-term rentals, as long as we have the recourse to deny renewal, if they're, to use the word, but not the word, if they're creating a nuisance for the neighborhood, then by and large, I'm okay with that. What I would ask though, so we can all get on the right page here, Jeff, you had suggested different language, since I will take the responsibility to consolidate whatever we're doing and not doing here, if you could forward that to me, I would appreciate it.
I will do that, if not before the end of the meeting, but at the end of the meeting, I'll send it right directly on to you, Jeff, okay?
Okay, moving on, my summary of what was in the 610.
Yes, please, yep.
We, as a commission, had specifically debated and talked about adding farm to table as a permitted use. I'm not sure why the Agriculture Commission doesn't want to include that, it doesn't seem like it hurts anybody, and the commission itself was very positive and wanted to do that, and debated on the right way to do it. So I would ask, you know, Luther and Art and company, you know, why is it that that is objectionable to you guys?
Art, do you want to speak to that? Do you want me to speak to that?
Go ahead Luther.
So, Dick, this, I think unfortunately, you were not at the meeting that I presented a pretty in-depth PowerPoint app, where this was one of the topics we offered some clarification on. I think that the understanding we were able to bring to the commission was that farm-to-table is something that is pretty widely identified as branding that is used by restaurants to market a short supply chain from the grower to the restaurant to the consumer, and that it seemed like your intent was to promote what we were calling on-farm dining, which we're very much in favor of, and we appreciate the desire to promote that sort of opportunity for farms in Ashford, but that calling it farm-to-table was misleading and maybe misutilizing branding that already was pretty commonly understood to mean something else. So that if, if farm-to-table, you know, even the phrasing of that being done on a farm doesn't actually make a lot of sense if you break it down, because it's not even farm-to anywhere, it's still farm-to-farm. So, if the intent of the commission was to allow farms to create permanent dining establishments on the farm to offer dining opportunities utilizing items grown on the farm, we call that on-farm dining, or on-farm restaurants, and otherwise, if it's just one-off events, then it's already pretty well captured under Section 10, Section 4, Article 2, I can't remember how everything broke out with the new stuff, honestly, but temporary seasonally agriculturally related items, it's already captured under that as something agriculturally adjacent, so, does that make any sense, Dick, that that was kind of how we were thinking about those things?
Yeah, Luther, the idea was, is to permit, generally, if you're in IRA zone, you can't have a restaurant.
Correct.
Oh, so this was to permit a farm to operate something that is uniquely associated with that farm as far as providing dining on that farm.
That's great, and if that's the case, then we would simply suggest that you call it something like on-farm dining establishment, rather than farm-to-table, because we just think that that might be confusing for people, that's all.
Yeah, Mark, you're the one that worked on the wording on this more than anyone else, what is your feelings on this?
Well, I think I mentioned back in the original meetings that, you know, farm-to-table is, like Luther described, you know, typically associated with restaurants that are, you know, getting produce locally, or meats locally.
Okay, I think we're all under agreement then, that the term farm-to-table is misrepresented in here for what our intent was, and we open to simply, again, I think it brings it home much more clearly, on-farm dining as a special permitted use?
I'm okay with that, the idea was to open the opportunity for a farm to offer some limited amount of dining, like a restaurant, without having to be a restaurant.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely, go ahead Art.
So, I think, it would seem to me you might want to be more along the lines of an on-farm restaurant, because on-farm dining, you could have a temporary event where someone just comes one time a year, a couple times a year, and it has an event where there's dining at the farm, and that would be covered under the farm special events. But if this is going to be a brick-and-mortar restaurant on a farm that requires a special permit, which I'm all for, and everybody on the Ag Commission is for, then I would prefer it to say what it is, it's an on-farm restaurant, requires a special permit, and, because if you use dining, a temporary dining event would now, could be lumped into that special permit for dining.
I think we're hesitant to throw the word restaurant in.
Because restaurant is a very defined, you know,-ish term, and I got to go back to the definition list, but it does, a restaurant is a permitted use, or special permitted use, depending on what it is, so look, look in here, I mean, the idea is that there is a way for a farm to offer someone to come and sample their goods on their farm, is what the intent is.
So it's needed, so you're thinking neither an event, or a brick-and-mortar establishment, more along where food is prepared, because it's, you get into, when you start preparing food, especially on a farm, you get into all sorts of different permitting issues with the Department of Health, and all that other kind of stuff. So if you're thinking if it's just a temporary, occasional sampling or dining event, then it's just that an event, but if it is a permanent dining experience, I won't say restaurant, then that's a whole different animal, that opens up a whole nother realm of issues for the farm operator. Like I said, Department of Health, well water has to be tested, you have to have a commercial kitchen if you're preparing food at the place, so that's, that's what most farms who do an event-style thing is they'll have a food truck or a caterer who will prepare their food off-site and bring it to eat, so, so it's, that's where the water is muddy, so.
Yeah, Art, we do not want to step on the toes of the health districts' regulations, those things are there regardless, whether you're going to hold a event in Nolton Hall or event on, you know, Neji Road. or event on, you know, Neji Road at our Talijas Farm. Those things have to be met in order to do that. The idea here was simply to recognize this as something someone might do. Now, if you want to eliminate this, we were trying to give special recognition to it by making it a special permitted use. If you want to just lump it into the other use things that happen, fine, we can just take it out.
Well, so where the catch is for us is that if it's just an occasional dining event, it's already covered under the on-farm special events section. If it's going to be something more permanent, and like I said, if you're thinking that it might be a brick-and-mortar type setup, a couple tables in an established building as opposed to a tent, then that, that's, if that's the way, if that's what you're thinking, then by all means, that should probably have a special permit. But just to have a temporary occasional sampling or dining event is already covered under the event section.
Yeah, the idea is not to permit in an IRA zone, a brick-and-mortar restaurant. That is not the intent. The intent was to simply allow for an occasional thing that would happen. You know, if, and if you watch the Food Channel, they have this traveling restaurant that goes from place to place around the world, and the idea is that they're doing local, and they're having an event that they do local, and it's on like a picnic table. So that was kind of the idea of it. I would propose that we take it out totally, and just let it be accomplished via the special events.
The only other term that I've seen used that you could consider if you wanted to keep something in there would be something like a farm-eatery. Because, the thing that I don't like about restaurant is it seems, the term restaurant feels, it's too conventional, and we want to remain, keep it flexible. So somebody who wants to have something small, maybe not a, you know, something as significant or as established as a restaurant, might want to serve something another way. So the term eatery might work. If you want to take it out, we can do that too, but I just wanted to get that in.
Go ahead. You know, the analogy is like, my wife and I, in good times, not late times, have gone on the Wine Trail around Connecticut, and a lot of the Wine Trail, besides the wine, is of the local produce that they're serving up. And these are, you know, they're not like established restaurants, but they're kind of like on, as I said, picnic tables outside the winery. So we want to encourage farms to do things like that. So I would say it's probably best handled by just taking the term out of the definitions and the special permitted, and just let it fall into the other special uses.
You were gonna say, Paul?
Yeah, I was gonna say that part of the problem with it, and I think I may have been the one that brought it up, was in the definitions, you have it as farm-to-table establishments, and it says, "An establishment located on a farm serving food grown on that farm." Which, you know, as a farmer, that's great. If I owned a restaurant, I would be worried, because if I wrote farm-to-table on the side of my building, now technically I'd be in violation of that definition. And that, that was what I had brought up at that meeting, I think in March. I'm a huge proponent of allowing farms to have some type of event, or even a semi-permanent or permanent structure that would allow for occasional events. I like Mike's idea of the eatery kind of thing, because that would give you some flexibility. As long, and I'm actually happy to see that the commission is promoting that. But I was looking at it from a broader perspective of, you also, with that definition, you could be creating a problem further down the road inadvertently for other restaurants, legitimate up restaurants, who want to buy local produce from, say, Art, and advertise it as farm-to-table. That was my, that's my input.
Luther?
Just maybe a slightly different interpretation, just to think about. Language similar to what Mike was talking about, on-farm establishment, or however you want to phrase it, that gives me, when I hear that, that gives me the connotation of, similar to what Dick was talking about with the Wine Trail, a location being able to routinely, habitually, consistently offer that service, that food, that whatever menu we're offering, they're offering, it allows them to do that on a continual basis. Whereas, a temporary agriculturally-related event, you know, by its nature, is something that is not on a continual basis. So I think that might be one way to look at this as, what the commission's intent is, is the intent of the commission that a farm should be able to offer continually this service or revenue stream, or is it something that they want the farm to only be able to offer periodically? And that might just be one way of looking at whether it needs to be included or not. Thanks.
You know, Luther, I would give an example, is around the corner from me is the Botul Farms, and they're raising all sorts of kinds of livestock. If they wanted to have like a tasting of their livestock, that would be like an eatery, that they would offer ongoing, just like a winery would offer tastings of the wine.
Yep. And that makes sense. I just, I think that the commission needs to think of, or, you know, maybe the commission could look at it in terms of, like I said, is it a continual thing that we're allowed to do, subject to renewal of their permit, or is it a one-off thing? And I think, you know, both are great, both have their place, and it's really up to the commission as to how they want to determine as a group, what's best for Ashford in terms of, is this something you want farms to be able to do continually, or just bit by bit?
Let me kind of retrace on this for a second, and embrace what Mike was saying. Let's call it eatery rather than farm-to-table. And Mike, could you draft some language that would change what we're saying on this, to include that as a special permitted activity?
Yep.
My interest here is to move forward. So...
So we would remove farm-to-table, we would make it a farm-eatery, and we would also remove farm-to-table from the definitions, and replace it basically with a definition for farm-eatery?
Correct. And Mike has the action to come up with a change in language.
Yep.
Moving down my list of the summary.
You're muted.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I have a question.
Stop!
Sorry to beat the dead horse, but, so I like farm-eatery. Does that allow the farmer, as Luther mentioned, does that allow the farmer to do this continuously? Does he get a special permit that this is forever?
Well, I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for what, my read of the way that this is going is that it's going to be up to the way in which they present it to the commission and how it's approved. But the idea would be whether it's an event where they want to have one or two things over the course of the summer, or if they want to establish some type of, some type of building on their property where they offer this. The way they structure their permit would be how we would determine that, but it would give that flexibility so that these farmers don't have to come in every time they want to have something, and we're putting them through a 30 to 60-day, because it's a special permit. So with a hearing, application receipt, you know, publish of the decision, I mean, it's a 60-day process. So we would have that ability to have them come in and get a permit for a longer period of time.
As opposed to a certificate of compliance they would get for a temporary agricultural use of a one-time event, or two-time-a-year event, or something like that.
Oh, okay. Well, that, I think that's a great, I think that makes sense. I like that. Okay.
Yeah. And since it's a special permit, that allows the commission to attach various conditions to it. So they could say they, you have a special permit, assuming it does not impinge upon the rights of your butters, or something like that. So you can put those conditions into a special permit, but if you make it an automatic permit, you can't do that.
Right. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, one of the other items that was suggested by the ag commission is they wanted to eliminate the statement that only one per business per location for seasonal signs. I didn't understand why that was asked for, because as I, you know, roam around the town and see signs for various businesses, and the one that comes to mind is Sean Patrick, in his, you know, plants and greenhouse, he's got signs on a lot of corners, but doesn't have multiple signs for his business at the place. I think if you had one sign per location, that would be fine. Why would you want to have multiple signs at one location for the same business?
Hey, Dick, this is Paul Varga. Can I ask a question regarding this? What do you mean by location? That's my question. Because Sean Patrick has, if I can count quickly, I think five or six signs located on my, at my location, along my property, with permission by me. But, and that was the reason I asked about that whole regulation at the last meeting, was because it doesn't define, well, it doesn't say anywhere what that means. In other words, does it mean you can only have one sign on one piece of property, or one sign at the location of the business? If that's what you're driving for, then that's fine, but does then, yeah, I don't know how to fix that. I'm just saying that I happen to own a substantial amount of road frontage. So when somebody, when he asked if he could put signs on it, I worked with him, because as you know, and you mentioned, he's not exactly on the main road. So, but I own a good portion of the road that accesses his location. So that is, that's my reasoning for asking or requesting clarification of that.
Yeah. At one location would mean, like, for instance, and take the intersection of, I think it's Zechik Road and 74, he's got a sign there that points to this way to Sean Patrick. The idea is that he wouldn't put four or five signs there. He'd put one sign there, because that's one location. And then, as he gets to each turn, on his way to his location, he puts up one sign at each turn. But he doesn't put up three or four signs at each turn. It's trying to do...
No, I mean, that makes sense, but that, and that's why I said, I just didn't, I want to, there's no, I don't even know how you would clarify it. I just, I could see somebody bringing it up as, well, the final, what's the, what do you mean by location?
Well, location would be, you have to find location in the definitions. Basically, it'd be one physical place.
Or are you talking, all right, I understand, Paul, you're talking about one property, you know, you know, is that what location means, things like that?
Right. And you know what? And honestly, the problem isn't gonna, I mean, I think everybody on this, at this meeting understands that, that it's, you gotta look at what could possibly happen, and somebody could argue it in the future and cause a headache for some poor guy, just trying to get people to his business because he's three miles off the main road. So, and like I said, it's a unique situation for him and I, where I own, like I said, a fair amount of road frontage. So with multiple intersections between him and, and the access point, so to speak, that are on my property, or during that, that, whatever I'm trying to say, the distance that you travel along my property, there's a couple intersections. So you could easily miss it if you, if you didn't have those signs.
And Paul, I would not consider your total property as one location. A location would be the intersection of, as I said, Zechik and 74. And I think the idea here is not to proliferate signage in our rural, you know, community, you know?
You mean like during election season, when there's 42 of them at the corner of 74 and Craft?
Yeah, that's election, that's election time there. But, but the idea is not, is not to, you know, over-signage. But definitely, there's no, there's no intent to prohibit any of the remote farmers or businesses.
Yeah, no, I didn't think there was. I just wanted to make, I mean, and I'm just saying, like I said, it's a unique situation for him and I, so to speak. I don't know that that situation exists almost anywhere else in town, but...
I would propose that we leave it in. This was, this wasn't anything that we added to it. It was something that was already there. Working our way down to changes. I went out on the internet and looked for definitions of agricultural waste, and I found several on various states. I didn't find any on Connecticut, but I found several on other state sites. Basically, agricultural waste is waste that's generated as a result of doing agriculture. So that seemed to be a pretty straightforward definition. So that's what was put in to the six-ten document. It was very generic. It says, you know, if you're, have a, they're sheep and they crap, that's agricultural waste. If you have, you know, hay that goes away, if we have other things we'd want besides that, I'm open for that. But that was what seemed to be a simple definition. Luther?
So when we spoke at the last Zoom meeting about this, it was my understanding, sort of what I took away from that was that the Planning and Zoning Commission, perhaps at this meeting, would come to an understanding as to what they wanted to include in what agricultural waste was, and that the ag commission could then work with planning and zoning, or provide guidance to planning and zoning, to try to come up with meaningful language to address that. And the context to think about this as, is that if you simply call it agricultural waste, you're creating a situationally-dependent definition, because what may be waste to Paul, or may be waste to Doug, or may be waste to Art, may not be waste to me. And what may be waste to me may not be waste to them. It's dependent on production, it's dependent on methodologies and use. And the reality is that if you're trying, or if the intent is to regulate manure storage, or manure stockpiling, then the simple solution is just call it manure. Don't try to call it agricultural waste. If you want to regulate where people store their manure, then we would encourage you to regulate where people store manure, and not try to create a whole nother term called agricultural waste, to try to capture more things. Does that make sense?
Luther, my intent of going back to that, is something very simple, is if we said agricultural waste was A, B, C, D, what if we didn't do, you know, E, F, G? The state defines what agriculture is in the statute, and we go back in the definition and we reference the state statute as to what is agriculture. So if it's produced by the process of agriculture, and it's waste, it's, it is. That, you know...
Sure, but what, what is waste? I guess that's my question, is what is waste? Does waste mean something that has no further purpose, use, resale, or meaningful input to the farm? Does waste mean manure? Because manure, to me, still has viable, valuable inputs to the farm, and is not waste. It's just something that's waiting to be utilized. So does that make sense?
I think the language I used in the, my damn cell phone. The language I use is, this is the byproduct of doing agriculture. So it's, whether you want to use it or not use it, it's the byproduct. And I'll have to go back to my notes to find it. But it is the simple byproduct of the process of performing agriculture. Agriculture is defined by the state statute. So...
So then that would perhaps exempt manure from that definition with that language, because, you know, what you have is agricultural waste is defined as an unwanted waste produced as a result of agriculture. as a result of agricultural activities. Well, manure is not unwanted.
Maybe, maybe-
Manure is just a part of the cycle of production. Right, but if it's my facility-
Luther, the point you're making is that to you, it's not unwanted.
And to many-
And others, it could be unwanted.
And that's, I guess that's the point I was trying to make is that that definition can be situational. So I may not understand it to mean manure where someone else may understand it to mean manure, which is why I was trying to make the point that things have different value to different operations. And if you just say agricultural waste is something that has no further value or use, well, it might not have value to you, but it might have value to me.
I would propose that we take the unwanted and simply say waste is, is a product that comes there, therefore it can be wanted or not wanted. The idea is that we don't want to prohibit a farmer from the aspect of having manure because he's raising cattle. You know, that, that's something that is natural to the process.
Sure, sure, but, and if that's your primary concern for storage and regulation, I, I think it's just a lot simpler to just call it manure.
Well, guys, guys, so what I see from agricultural waste, we look it up, it says is unwanted waste produced as a result of agricultural activities, manure, oil, silage, plastics, fertilizer, pesticides and herbicides. Well, those are, those are a little bit more different than manure, pesticides and herbicides. So I, I, we have to look into that a little bit more because, you know, every farm, farmers do have herbicides and pesticides, you know? That's a waste that has to be, be looked at.
Are all of these, gentlemen, our agricultural group, are all of these regulated under the NRCS?
Manure storage is, is pretty thoroughly guided through NRCS.
What about the other items such as the herbicides and things like that that Alex mentioned?
That would be regulated by DEEP and the federal government.
Depending on what you're applying, would depends on your licensing requirements and storage requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
And a pesticide applicator.
Licensed-
Yeah, most guys now don't do, I mean, there's very few, well, there's no dairy farms left, so, but a lot of us just use a commercial applicator to do it so we don't have to deal with that. And that's why, because the, the permitting process through DEEP and all that is pretty extensive.
What I would, what I would propose is remove the word unwanted and use that definition that Alex had come up with. When, when you specify manure, pesticides, blah, 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 then that is restricted. If you pick a, a general statement that you are talking about things that are produced as a, the process of, you know, agriculture, which is defined by the state, then that allows the most broad definition and gives the most leeway to the farmer.
Well, I mean, this is Mark and, and I'm looking under Article 4B, Section 2, permitted uses. We have agricultural waste storage associated with a farm operation. That's a permitted use. And under Section 4B, Section 3, Special Permitted Uses, 19B, we have agricultural waste storage not associated with a farm operation. So I'm not sure how this is going to negatively impact a farm.
Well, Mark, that's a great point because really if you look at the phrasing there and if you look at the defined terms, the specially permitted use is a moot one because agricultural waste cannot be developed apart from an agricultural production facility. So the only way you get agricultural waste is through agriculture. So waste storage would just be waste storage at that point. It wouldn't be agricultural waste if it wasn't as part of an agricultural.
The reason for separating those two was the experience that we had at Exit 72 where we had a trash plant planned at that exit that we were lucky to, to head off. But let, let's just say that someone decides that there is an opportunity to go around to all the farmers and collect all the manure and bring it to Exit 72 and do a anaerobic digester to produce gas at that facility. That would require a special permit. A farmer who simply is getting manure as a result of his cattle, that should not require a special permit. That should be permitted as part of the farming operation. Luther and I, what I'm trying to do is make this as positive to the onsite farmer, you know?
And, and I think we can both appreciate that, I think, you know? And, and I'm certainly not trying to be resistive of that. I, I, I'm really just trying to articulate that. From, from the conversation this evening and, and previous conversations, it really sounds like the principal concern in this language is manure management. And I just feel like if that's the preliminary concern, then if you address manure management, you actually are narrowing the scope and making it simpler and you're probably creating a simpler, safer environment for a farm to know they're in compliance and you're, you're taking the questionable nature of waste or not waste, or does it have further purpose or does it not have further purpose out of the dialogue? You know, regulating setbacks on waste storage is perfectly legitimate and acceptable and, and has been done in town for a long time. You know, storing manure is part of farming. Waste is also part of farming, but my waste on this farm is non-organic matter that gets loaded up and taken to the transfer station and disposed with, in accordance with transfer station rules and regulations. And anything that's organic matter on this farm, I do not consider waste. I consider it either compost or, you know, something that I'm going to compost down for, for future use on the fields for production. So I don't, I don't look at it as waste. It might be manure, it might be hay that's rotting down, but it's not waste.
Yeah, but the definition itself doesn't limit you at all. The only definition, as Dick said, that is limiting is, has to do with the storage of it if you are not using it for agricultural purposes.
And I guess what I'm getting at is if I wanted to be a jerk and say, well, I'm going to store, I'm going to store my compost pile 10 feet off this property line to my neighbor, it's not waste matter. It's not waste. You have no right to tell me where I can store it. It's not waste. It's compost for future use. You see where that kind of a, a dialogue would not be positive? Whereas if you just said manure management, manure storage, compost, whatever, has to be 100 feet from your boundary line, then it's pretty black and white that, hey, don't store your manure right next to your neighbor.
Luther, I'm, what, what we try to do in this is use commonly acceptable terms as much as possible. And that's, you know, why we looked to definitions such as what is agricultural waste? Agricultural waste includes manure, but it includes a whole bunch of other things. So it will automatically include manure. It, it doesn't, but if you just say manure, you're excluding all the other things that might be done there. So it, the idea is to try to use generally acceptable terms as much as possible that are overarching rather than trying to narrow them to very specific areas.
Well, again, this is Mark again. I mean, we have agricultural waste storage associated with a farm operation as a permitted use. I, I mean, I'm not quite certain I understand what your objection is Luther. The only thing we have a special permit for is agricultural waste storage not associated with a farm operation.
The, the use scenario, I don't think is, is an objectionable scenario. I think the use scenario is, is, is reasonable. I think that, again, if, if, if agricultural waste, you know, right now, and again, I may be looking at the wrong document because two versions of the document that were posted. Well- Agricultural waste is defined as an unwanted waste produced as a result of agricultural activities is what's in the document. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't name manure, it doesn't name anything really. It just says agricultural waste is agricultural waste.
But that's a permitted use on a farm.
I, I know that and, and I appreciate that. And, and that's my point is when you say agricultural waste is unwanted waste, unwanted by whom?
Luther, what I would propose is we take the word unwanted out, which allows you to want it or not want it, but it's simply produced as a result of farming, agriculture, whatever you. So it, it would include manure, it would include, you know, composted items, it'd include all sorts of things.
It's not, it's just not labeled. It's waste, but it's not labeled wanted or unwanted.
Yes, just remove the word unwanted.
Art, what's your take on, on that? Because I, I think I'm, I'm probably, I'm probably in my own head, understanding what I'm trying to say, but I'm probably not saying it well because I think I keep getting stuck on the fact that I don't consider organic matter on the farm as waste. And so I think that might just be my inadequacy in communication. So Art, can you?
Well, I, so it sounds to me like the storage of agricultural waste is a permitted use on an operational farm in town. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And so, so the hangup is, is on whether this waste is unwanted or wanted or not? Is that where we are? Luther?
No, not, not so much that. I, I, I'll just, I'll just bow to the collective wisdom because I, I think I'm just stuck on the notion that, like I said, to me, if it's organic matter that I can rot down and continue to use, it's not waste. But that's just my own personal understanding of the life cycle of things on the farm. And if that's not in alignment with the collective knowledge, then that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll bow to the collective knowledge on it. In our production cycle, if it's organic and I can rot it down and use it again on the farm, it's not waste. But that's just me.
It's not, it's not wasted. It's waste, but it's not wasted.
So it's, I think we're, we're hung up on the technical definition of waste from where I sit. That's what it seems like. And it's, if you read the Webster definition, it's the unusable remains or byproducts of production. So put agriculture in front of it, it's the same thing. Unwanted, unusable remains or byproducts or something. So Luther's point is, is that depending on who you are, it may be wanted and somebody else may think it's unwanted. So I think removal, removing the unwanted, as Dick suggested, might be the best move. I would, I would just ask is, is, are there new setbacks applied to this? And is there any other language that I'm missing? Or is it, we'll be just talking about the definition of agricultural waste?
The setbacks for agricultural waste storage are not changed from the previous iteration of the land use regulations.
Okay, so, so, okay, so, so that seems okay to me. I don't have the documents right in front of me. That seems okay to me. I don't know, I'd have to defer to Doug, see what he thinks. But I would also advise that once the waste leaves the farm, if it's going to a non-farm operation, it's no longer agricultural waste. When it gets to wherever it's going, it's waste. If it leaves a farm and goes to an anaerobic digester, it's waste. If it leaves the farm and goes to the neighbor's house who is spreading it on his lawn, it is waste. It's not agricultural waste. So, so I think, so it changes as soon as it leaves the farm. You're, you're defining agricultural waste to be permitted on an agricultural operation. Once it leaves and goes to a non-farm operation, it is no longer agricultural waste.
Well, that actually flies in the face of the definition because it's production. Its definition is based on the production as a result of agricultural activities. That's what makes it agricultural waste and it remains that because that's how it was produced.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll agree.
And the real thing we're trying to regulate here is granted, it was a trash dump at Exit 72 that was proposed. You could just as well make it an agricultural waste dump. And we really do not want someone building a trash dump, agricultural waste dump in town. We want the farmer to be able to do what they do, but we don't want some outside organization producing something that's going to hurt the town.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the agreement is that we remove the word unwanted and everyone is okay with the idea it's permitted with farm operations, but a special permit when there is no associated farm operation.
Yes.
So that basically, that summarizes the changes that I made to the 610 document. So can we have a, from, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a vote to accept these changes? Jeff, you could summarize them?
This is Doug. Before we do any of that.
Yeah, I wanted to go through, well, go ahead Doug, I'm sorry.
The agricultural waste storage not associated with the farm. So if the general person, general public in town has one or two horses, but they don't have a registered business or anything associated with a farm, now you're going to make, now we, our intention is to make them go get a special permit? I'm backing up of many steps to what is our real intent here with this? Because I don't think it really needs to be in the regulations. I don't want to make every single person in town that doesn't have an agricultural business come to us to get a special permit. What is our intent?
Our intent is to prohibit the kind of thing that was almost put in place at Exit 72 in terms of processing large scale commercial waste for, for recycling and trash to energy. If the farmer wants to sell four wheelbarrows of, of manure to his next door neighbor, hey, no one's going to, that's not, that's not a special permit for that. The idea is if there is a specific area where someone is going to collect this waste and, and reprocess it, that's what we're trying to prohibit. Matter of fact, I got a, I got a horse farm down the street from me and everyone goes down there and gets some of the manure to spread on their garden.
So just to clarify something, the state definition of agriculture does not tie agriculture to any sort of income. It shall include cultivation of the soil, burying, forestry, raising or harvesting of any agricultural or horticultural commodity, including raising, sharing, feeding, carry for, trading and management of livestock, including horses, bees, poultry, purring animals and wildlife. And it goes on and on and on. It doesn't tie anything to commercial. So if I'm raising one chicken, I am under the state definition of agriculture and then when that chicken poops, that will be agricultural waste.
Yeah, and that is, and what we're trying to do, Art, is reference back to generally accepted terms and/or the state terms for agriculture. The definition for agriculture in, is references back to the state definition of agriculture. So by, you know, so it's all tied to that same place, not trying to reinvent words.
Right, so the point of the one person with one horse or one chicken or one cow who's not selling the products or offspring of that agricultural enterprise there at their home would, would still be producing agricultural waste and they wouldn't need a special permit of being a non-agricultural operation.
Absolutely, absolutely correct.
Oh, this is Mark Schnubel. I mean, would it be helpful if we put a-
I mean, would it be helpful if we put a volume after agricultural waste storage not associated with an operation? I mean, as an example, a triaxle, you know, probably holds between 20 and 26 yards of compost. And I can't imagine, you know, any homeowner is going to get, you know, greater than a triaxle of compost dumped on their yard.
But the definition isn't looking, the definition itself is not looking to put a regulation in.
Right. But I'm looking at where agricultural waste storage falls under Article 4B, Section 3, Special Permit Uses.
Right.
So, you know, I understand, you know, Doug's comment on, you know, are we going to regulate the person who's not a farm, who has a horse, who's storing manure? Well, I would assume that someone with even two or three horses isn't going to have, you know, 20 cubic yards of cal, you know, of horse manure. Help me put a volume.
Sorry, Mark. This is Janet. So for the special permit uses, could we add agricultural waste storage not associated with a farm operation or residential use?
Not associated with a farm or residential use?
Because if, if I have a chicken, I'm still a resident, it's still residential, right?
But by the state definition of agriculture, you are practicing agriculture because you are raising livestock.
Again, it cuts back to the intent of what we're looking for. Rather than add more words to cloak it, why don't we just be deliberate and state what we're trying to protect? Which I thought, if I think heard correctly, it's, it's really like some industrial operation, right?
So we really want to say commercial agricultural storage.
Oh, my farm is commercial.
But, but it, but this is not associated with a farm operation.
Offsite.
Right. So this is agricultural waste storage not associated with a farm operation.
I think the key word, Mark, is storage.
Right.
Because if, if I'm going to get several wheelbarrow full of, of horse manure for my garden, I'm not storing it. I'm just spreading it on my garden. So that's not storage. Storage is the, is the key word. And I, and I think if we stick to standard words that mean standard things, we're better off than trying to redefine words.
So again, what is the intent for the special permit? Because I keep hearing that we're just trying to mask the true intent by adding more and more words to protect everything else.
The intent for the special permit, if, if you're not a farm and you want to store agricultural waste at a facility, then to get to the point of what you're going to use it for, and that's covered by other regulations already, that you need a special permit. And in that special permit, you can go into all the things you can and cannot do. When, you know, it's regular permitted use allows the farmer to do whatever he wants to do.
Any other input on that?
Just that if you're going to stick with that language, you're, I think you're missing a with. Because it reads agricultural waste storage not associated a farm operation.
What if the, what if you guys considered adding not associated with an onsite farming operation? So if it's on the property, then we're not worried about it. But if they want to pick it up and bring it somewhere, I mean, I think we're really down in the weeds as far as the likelihood that we're ever even going to read this line again. But it seems to me like, you know, that's what the real concern is, whether it's onsite or not.
And so my, my consideration I would ask you to think about on that is that a lot of people that are in production agriculture will stockpile manure specifically on various parcels away from the main hub of the farm, which may be interpreted wrongly as stockpiling not related to onsite agricultural production. You'll stockpile manure at the field that you're going to spread it on. So it would just potentially create misunderstanding and confusion to add that language because it might just be the farm getting ready to spread manure in the spring.
But isn't that field that you're spreading upon part of the farm?
It is. And, and you know that and I know that, but someone driving by may, may think, well, why is this person stockpiling manure?
Well, they've got a lot of steps before they throw you in jail for that, Luther. They've got a lot of steps.
They just generated unnecessary traffic through your office to, when you have those words in there and now people are thinking.
But that's, but, but what you're mentioning is covered in Section 2, Permitted Uses.
I, I know that. And, and I guess I'll withdraw it. I was just trying to save you guys, people calling up, saying, hey, they shouldn't be doing this.
To just build off Luther's point, what if the land is rented? A lot of farmers rent land. If they're stockpiling their waste on a rented piece that they do not own, they rent, would that, where would that fall?
Still part of an associated with a farm operation. Because you're, you're leasing the property.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
You know, keep in mind, the key point of all this is diversion that you saw before we made the changes made agricultural waste a special permitted area, and that was seen as a mistake. So we made it a permitted area because farmers generate waste, whether it's wanted or unwanted or whatever, as a normal process of running their farm. So we want that to be permitted. What we don't want permitted is someone coming in from outside deciding they're going to collect whatever kind of waste it may be and use it in, in a way that's more commercial, not associated with a farming. And so that's what this special permit. When you have a special permit, it doesn't say you can do ABC automatically. It means that someone has to submit a application for the special permit. And in that application, it says all the things you're going to do and not going to do. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission can impose special requirements on that. It's not like it's automatic at all. It's, it's simply puts it to the point of review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I think, Dick, I think you summed that up nicely because yes, one, we did make the change of making it a, from a, any question about agricultural use being a permitted use as opposed to a non-permitted use. We also tried to and came up with a, a feasible, at least somewhat workable definition of agricultural waste that wasn't there before.
Correct.
So we've moved, you know, we've moved on a number of things here, which I think we could come up with, and I mean, leasing, renting, we could come up with all kinds of different scenarios. But I think, I think we've covered, we've got 95% of this covered as an issue. I don't think it's going to come up, as Mike said, it's if we ever talk of this again, it would be a very, very rare occurrence.
Correct.
So we'd like to move, why don't we move forward on this? Thank you for the input. We appreciate it.
Let me put one more thing. Doug's review pointed out a bunch of typos and.
Oh, yes.
Import proper references and stuff. Doug, thank you for double proofreading everything. In the final version, we definitely will take everything that you put in there incorporated into, into the final document. You heard that, Doug?
Yep. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were expecting a reaction from me.
Yep. So, so Jeff, let me summarize here for the record.
Yep.
You're going to come up with revised language on the nuisance within the Section 4B.
Already sent to you, yes.
And we're going to take it out of the definition. We're going to change farm to table to farm to eatery. And who's going to come up with the definition of that?
I am.
Mike's going to come up with the definition to that. We leave in the issue of one sign per business per location for seasonal signs. Agricultural waste is, is the definition we had. We removed the word unwanted from that and used the accepted regulation. On agricultural waste storage permitted for associated with farm operations, we leave that as is. On the agricultural waste storage for permitted use when not associated with farm operations, do we want to add or residential use or what do we want to add there?
Dick, what section were you just talking about?
The agricultural waste storage is a special permitted use when not associated with farm operations. It was suggested to add or residential use.
My input is I, I, I think it makes it confusing for the non, for residential use. But because.
I would, I'd propose that we leave it as is because since it's a special permitted use, it means that we can dictate how it's done or not done.
Right.
Yeah. My only thought, because I'm trying to look at all this as we go through with an eye towards enforcement and just dealing with any question, because it's a special permit use, you guys really have the flexibility to decide if, if an applicant needs to come before you or not. So if there's a question and we go to the commission and say, listen, do they need a special permit? Because is, is this the intent of what you thought? I mean, you can make that call. It's because of the special permit category. So if you feel like it's just a neighbor bringing up an issue that really is not meant to, to deal with what's come up and it's a simple residential use that doesn't need anything, then we don't send them before the commission. So I, I think, you know, if, I think you can leave it as is and still have the flexibility to say, listen, you know, we don't need it for this, we don't need it for that, you know. So I think you're kind of covered.
Okay. So the sentiment is leave it as is.
Yep.
Okay. Can I get the Planning and Zoning Commission to offer a motion to accept these as the changes we'll make to the 610 document?
Can you hold that for one second, Dick? Just because I believe this is chair, I need to ask for the motion. But I just wanted to go over two things under Doug's input and just to make sure we're covered on this. Actually, one thing specifically. Doug, you had a comment under livable floor area requirements on page seven. And your comment, minimum finished floor area required for certificate of occupancy, 900 square feet. I'm, I'm asking, did you, did you think that the language should be in there? Because we had removed that language because certificate occupancy is not a function of the planning and zoning.
Doug, you're muted.
Better. Were you talking? Sorry.
Plus, I do this a lot of work. I wind up talking to myself on mute. I thought it was a screw up and like a simple typo because it exists in the existing regs that are published that we're working to today. And it just seemed like we screwed the cable up as we're manipulating Word files.
Unless I'm wrong, someone please correct me. I believe we removed that because of the fact that it's not part of our function.
Yes, we did remove that because we said the only thing we had was, that was all up to the building department. They had a criteria to follow for us, a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
Okay.
So that's dealt with. Thank you, Doug. I think that was the only thing, because the rest was just some of the typos and such that Doug.
Doug had a addition or change to the definition for Connecticut grown.
Oh, the definitions?
Adding the section of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Yeah, Connecticut grown. Thank you, Janet. Farm products grown and produced in Connecticut as noted under Section 2238 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Any problem with that change, Dick?
Oh, it's fine. The only ones that I was calling out were the ones we just discussed. Doug had a lot of editorial and, you know, missed items. And by all means, Doug, thanks for going over things in such detail. It's surprising how many times you can read this damn thing and not see mistakes. So you did a good job. Thanks.
So you've captured a vast majority of these, you feel. Obviously, I know you've captured the, in looking at your copy, the farm, farm brewery, farm distillery. The one, oops, I'm not looking at yours, I'm looking at his. Hang on a second. So I'm looking at the wrong one. Here we go. That's it. That's it. Yeah, you captured the winery and all of that. Okay, good. Font size was fixed. Nuisance we removed.
Yeah, Jeff, generally speaking, other than the things that listed in that exception document that we went through, we agreed with all the things the egg commission had asked for.
Right. And again, I was just going through some of the changes and some of the things that Doug had.
Okay. I mean, you're asking us to vote on it and we don't always know what you've, what you selected. Oh.
Right. We just want to be sure that everything has been captured, which is why I was going through Doug's piece here as compared to your more recent.
Mm-hmm.
Copy.
Okay. I'll, I'll repeat what my motion is. The nuisance definition is removed from definitions and is referenced with different wording that Jeff has proposed within Section 4B. Farm to table remains a special permit, but it's now called, calls farm eatery. And Mike, I think, is going to provide wording for that. The one business per location for seasonal sign remains within the regulations. A definition for agricultural waste was added from a state site, except we're going to use what is in there with removal of the word unwanted. Agricultural waste storage permitted for, associated with farm operation remains. Agricultural waste storage in a special permitted use when not associated with farm operation, So that, that will basically, when we get those additional words from those responsible for providing them, will give us a document that we can vote on as the full Planning and Zoning Commission and put forward to the special continuation of the special town meeting.
And so just to be clear, we're, you guys are going to essentially build a consensus through your motion to make the changes that he just outlined so that we can put this to that final public hearing in July, correct?
Correct.
Because, so, so we, so the commission is still going to see a document in person, well, through the computer screen that they can then vote on and potentially tweak during the final public hearing. And the, and we'll have that last public hearing, which I guess we're going to, we're going to target for the July 13th meeting to make these changes and have a document ready to go probably on the town's website before the end of this month.
So I don't think we really need a motion. We just have to be in consensus that we have made these changes.
And we want to do that so that we can get the final document up on the website. And we want to do that so that we can get the final document up on the website 10 days or more before the public hearing so that everybody will have had the time to review it so that when we have the public hearing, we'll have it done.
And I will take the input from everyone. In this case, it's Mike and Jeff and what Doug had put together previously and put that together in one document that I'll send out to everyone, you know, for review prior to the next meeting. Next planning zoning meeting.
The other piece that we probably need to address and I'm open to any suggestions on how to handle this is from our minutes from our last meeting, it was discussed that we would provide a legend of some type that clearly outlines what the old regulation language was and what the new proposed language was in order to, again, to better inform the public as to what they're looking at.
Jeff, I mentioned this in the beginning of this meeting. I'd sent out version controls for everything that had happened prior to my going to Florida at the end of February. And so that had different colors of who said what to whom and everything. After I left for Florida, I didn't have any control of what was done. Mike went back and did a version control of what was in the new document, which was dated 4/28, which I had provided, and what was there from the very initial one. That was a PDF document, which is impossible, at least in my software, to do a version control. I had put all of the changes in that we had from the meeting that we had of all the changes and that was what was controlled, that was presented in 4/28. I don't think it is going to be instructive to try to release to the public a document that shows all the version control.
I don't want to show all the version control. I don't want to show the litany of changes and things like that. I simply need a piece that says, this is what the old regulation was. This is what the new regulation being suggested is. They don't need to know all the discussion and all the input and the commas and spaces and everything that changed.
Well, I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Can't we just release the old one? Here's the old, here's the new one?
That frankly would be the easiest thing to do because in my experience with past revisions of land use regulations, no one has produced a red line version of A versus B. I went back to the one that we have presently and I went back to the one before that and it's never ever been released. If anything, it presents confusion to people because frankly, they can't possibly understand the conversations that went through to make the changes.
Dick, I don't think we want them to understand that. We just want to know what they want to explain what it was and what it is now. They don't even know why it was changed.
I think Janet's suggestion, put on the website the existing land use regulation. Put on the website the new proposed land use regulation. And they can go back and look at the two.
Oh, Lord. Could I say something?
Sure can.
All right. If you have your original regulations on the website and you are going to have the new document that Mr. Williams will be putting together and you know the sections that you've changed, why can't, I mean, I could do it or somebody, why can't someone take the five or six different areas and because the public, they're too long, the documents are too long. How are they ever going to be able to look and see where the changes are unless they're pointed out to people that here's section 3B, area 2, 1D, and this is what it was and this is what it is? Seems to me it could be done.
And that's really what we kind of discussed the last time and some of the input was if there are edits and things like this with any government document, even though we don't have a precedent for doing this, maybe it's time to set such a precedent so that we're fully transparent, that people understand the changes that are being made. And if they have a question about it, that's why they can either, you know, send in an email upon review or whatever. But I agree that trying to go through the original document and it's hard enough for us and we live with it day in and day out, let alone the layperson trying to go through the original document and go through the changes that are being made. I am willing to take that on. I just might hit up Mike or Richard to confirm some information as I go through it. But I'm willing to take that on and I will put that legend together.
Hey, Jeff. Paul Varga, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
The PDF file that was included with the agenda for tonight's meeting is pretty much exactly what I was speaking to at the last meeting where it tells you what the changes were. There was also some comments that were added in there, but those don't need to be there. I agree with Dick that the discussion of the board or the commission rather is not, if people want to hear it, they can do what I'm doing and sit through the meeting. But the actual change in the regulation, like for instance, I'm looking at Article 4B, Section 2, permitted uses where number 2, two-family dwelling, and it says in-law, deleted in-law apartment as accessory to single-family dwelling. That's what I'm talking about. So I can immediately know that there was a change to the previous regulation. That way, and there's a mark in the margin to tell me that there was a change. So if I want to go back to the previous regulation and read the whole entire thing, I have that ability and know where to look for it and what was removed without having to guess what was changed in the regulation.
Right, and but what I don't want to do is throw out any type of document, PDF or otherwise, that necessarily has, you know, something that if people aren't used to dealing with such a document with the markings and with the changes and things like that, I think a legend would help them to move along that, you know, this is the section, this is what it was, this is what it has been changed to.
Right. No, that's fine. I was just saying whoever did this for this meeting did a fantastic job. And it was easy to read through it and look at what was taking place.
My guess is that would have been Dick on that. So, okay, so I will follow through on that. I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
I was thinking it's one level higher. I'm not sure if we actually need like a page or two that explains which sections were changed, but as long as we can have like a line in the margin, then that'll clue the reader in to go, oh, that was changed. Because there's a line in the margin that denotes that it changed the code.
That's a good idea.
I don't know how to, I haven't personally done that in Microsoft Word, but it can't be too hard with somebody just looking around.
Yeah, I think the one thing that I'm thinking about the best way to do it, the one thing that's hard is that a lot of the changes were reformatting and relocating. And so the one document may show something that's missing, but it's not because the commission got rid of it, it's because they put it in a place where it was more appropriate. So I'm almost thinking, is it, because frankly, with the amount of time being that it's June 24th, trying to get, you know, I don't know what's more important, having a document up and available sooner versus later or having it something that is more, you know, addresses all these issues and outlines them. I mean, anybody could take the existing regulations and the proposed and simply highlight in yellow the existing regulations anywhere there's something that was changed. And when the reader sees that highlight, they would know to go to the proposed text to see the difference. But going through and looking at every single thing that was changed, I think, you know, I'm worried that we're going to go to the public hearing and someone's going to say, well, wait a minute, you didn't tell me about, you know, we're going to have something that's missed. And I mean, I can certainly help with that and I can certainly take on, you know, a section or something along those lines. But I know you guys started this a long time ago.
Well, the other thing is I'm not recommending that we hold anything up. We can put it up as we normally would, lack of transparency or otherwise. But we put it up there and if we're able to come up with such a legend that allows for an easy identification, then great, more power to us, good job. And I appreciate your offer for doing a section or something like that. But I would like to see us try and put something out. Because again, some of the changes also were formatting and the definitions from minimum building lot and all of that, if we go way, way back to that, where we changed the whole format and table structure of what was there too. So it's not a simple one for one, text for text.
You know, the, if you look at the document that Mike had produced that was the comparison, the Lorne Center, NICOG and CCR. I mean, it was entirely confusing. The average person would have no way to understand what that was. What I tried to do tonight is I made the changes to the document from 4/28 to what looked to be reasonable for 610 and I summarized what the changes were. And we discussed those, agreed to some, disagreed to others. I think maybe a summary like...
When I see, exactly, Dick, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. When I use the word legend, that's really what I'm talking about, is a summary of what the changes were. And then if people really want to dive into it, they can dive into it and compare the two and do such that. But at least it points them in the direction of what was changed. I mean, like I said, even the section regarding building lot and sorry, minimum lot size and minimal building area is more of a discussion on the change in our definition as opposed to the changes that were put in there.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to my multicolored summary of the things we agreed to, basically, you know, we changed what buildable area was. We changed what, you know, minimum lot size was. There's a whole bunch of things like that that were changed. We could produce a document that goes along with this that simply summarizes those at the very high level.
Right, right. That's what I'm looking to do. So that's really what I'll try and work with. And like I said, I will reach out to Michael and reach out to you to, if I run into any snags or need a better handle on some of the definition or some of the changes. But I'm willing to go through that. But again, I don't want to hold up posting the changes themselves to the regulations. We can put that up and as long as we put this up, you know, 72, 96 hours before the meeting.
97 hours.
As a study guide, then that would suffice.
And if everyone gets Mike and Jeff, which we just talked about, get them to me and I will take those plus the other things that Doug had found and roll them into a revised document. And I will do revision control with what I put in there.
Do we have a consensus from the group as opposed to a motion that we've made the changes appropriately and we've captured everything that needs to be changed?
Yes.
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 Yes, yep.
Do I hear a nay or a negative?
Amen.
Aye.
Caveat. Yeah, it's not as simple in my mind. I'm okay with these changes we verbally spoke about to go get incorporated, but concerned that we're going to take that document without having another PZC discussion to review it and give it straight to the public and try to close the open hearing with that. I would, I'm just, I'm concerned about one shot without us looking at it, having everything completely flushed out perfectly. It's no offense to anybody, I just, I don't want to repeat what happened the other week in any form at all. So, I don't know, not to, no, I'm not going to apologize. It is what it is. That's my thoughts.
Okay, I can understand that, Doug, and I appreciate that. I mean, really, the only thing I can offer up on this, you know, we have the public hearing scheduled. And if we have to make changes from the basis of the public hearing, we would need to make changes anyways. I think the document that goes out before we do post it, the officers will do a review of it. If anyone else would like to volunteer and do a full review of it before it goes out, I'm open to that. But the officers, Alex, myself and Richard and Michael will ask to do a full review of any of the changes or anything that needs to be done. And, but again, if anyone else wishes to review on that, we're more than happy to send it to you and get your input prior to sending it out.
I would like to review it, please, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
And then one last thing with the public hearing. So not everybody in town has the means of discussing this stuff in the forum that we're in now. So is it really prudent that we do these public forums electronically like this?
Doug, under the executive order from the governor, this has allowed town governments to not stagnate, to not sit pat and be able to move forward. Okay, it's an accepted and approved method. If someone wishes to both either access, get a hard copy of this and they can get a hard copy of this from the town offices, is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, if somebody called and said that they didn't have access, we could print a copy and they could pick it up.
Thank you. So we still have phone, we still have mail to make a request. I mean, their communications have not fully limited if they don't have access to a computer.
And let me add, we just passed the town budget by...
No vote whatsoever, right.
By Zoom, okay? So, I mean, we're in a different age. We can either decide to suspend everything that we're doing or we can try to move forward.
And one of our impetuses obviously also is to get this in for the codification under the grant period.
Absolutely correct.
So thank you, Doug, I appreciate that. And I understand that, you know, not everyone has, my computer's old too. I mean, but, you know, we have access to it. But, you know...
In my case...
It's the hand we have to deal, that we're dealt and that's what we're working with.
In my case, my computer crashed and I took it down to Savage Systems and they rebuilt it for me. So I'm back in use again.
But again, if there are people, and again, they can reach out, they can call, they can reach out. Our numbers are posted if they want to reach out to an officer for the commission. If they want to reach out to the zoning enforcement officer and send in a input or complaint, a land use office, whether it's by phone, whether it's by snail mail, if they don't have access to a computer. If they have a phone, my guess is they have some type of email that they can use and send. So, you know, access is there.
And so, okay.
Yeah, Jeff, before we adjourn, we have several people that are on this call that are not members of planning zoning that have not spoke. I would ask them to identify themselves and indicate their interests one way or the other in this meeting. Monique Bayer and Nick Weinstein, as shown, has been on the call.
If you could just acknowledge so we could have you down as guests that that's who it is and someone's not just using your computer, we appreciate it.
This is Monique Rowley. Actually, I work for Bayer, that's, I'm using my work computer.
I'm sorry, what's your last name, Monique?
Rowley, R-O-W-L-E-Y. And with me is my husband, Tom Samperi.
Okay.
And we have a farm and that was our interest in this call.
No, that's fine. Thank you as a guest. Appreciate it.
Nope, I'm glad to be here.
And Mr. Weinstein? Or Mrs. Weinstein?
Unmute, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Janet.
The, I think Mike said the new regs will be posted on the town website 10 days before the 13th. Is that right?
Is that what you said, Michael?
Well, when we met last time, there was discussion about wanting to make sure that it was up with sufficient time. So the 10 days was thrown around last time. You know, I think they should be up, you know, I think that's a normal amount of time if this were a standard public hearing that we were right out of the gate with. Granted, the public hearing was continued, so it's a little bit different. But the 10 days was what you guys had discussed at the June 8th meeting, I think.
Right, and that would be July 3rd to the holiday to get involved and everything like that. So we can have it out and posted.
And as soon as everyone, Mike and Jeff, get what you agreed to do to me, I will try to incorporate those changes with a tracking document and send that to everybody.
Okay. I sent mine already, Richard, so if you have any question or you haven't seen it, let me know. First, I want to thank, I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard.
I'm on Zoom, so I can't see my email.
Got it. I want to thank everyone for their input and their knuckling down and going through this. I appreciate Doug, your line-for-line review on catching so many of those smaller mistakes. Just makes the document all the better, so thank you very much. Thank you to our guests that came tonight and for their input. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, it's Janet.
Janet, motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Valerie?